The August 12th, 2013 meeting of East Penn School District Board of School Directors, if you might come to order. We will observe one minute, or should be a brief silence after the call of the Pledge of Allegiance in memory of Dr. William Leary, a former superintendent who spent nine years here at East Penn and who died this week. And so we will remember him by our moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in saying applause.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
We have three requests to address the board this evening. The first one is from Mr. John Donches of La Mayes.
Hello, everyone at the board. Dear board members, administration, public, and press, I'm here representing SEPTA, Concerned and Taxpayer's Association, to mention our upcoming event next Tuesday, August 20th, the Mayes Fire Company Number One, and on the topic of the new federally mandated educational standards called the Common Core. Our main speaker is Dr. Pekliczek, and she'll fill us in on the basic info on how the Common Core program got started and where it stands right now on the federal and state level. We'll also have Pennsylvania State House Representative Brian McKenzie provide us a legislative update on the status of the Common Core as it is right now. This is a very timely topic, as it's even mentioned on tonight's agenda. I came before this board in early June to announce this event, and I invited the administration to save the date. With that in mind, we're pleased to offer this open and free forum for the general public, and we again invite the Superintendent of East Penn School District, Dr. Seidenberger, or any other member of the administration to attend and to share with the public information as to what direct effect these new mandated standards will have on East Penn School District. I hope that East Penn School District administration will be open and willing to share their knowledge in this topic with the public at our scheduled event. I have included a flyer before that I handed in, and all the important and pertinent information is on that, and I can resupply that if anybody needs. And I thank you, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
The next request I have to address the board is a Carla Hess of Whitehall, Pennsylvania.
Good evening. Just had a few questions that I just wanted to throw out to you. What we would like to be doing in the very near future is putting a list of some questions together and submitting them to your superintendent and to the president of the board and possibly the rest of the board members. And I just wanted to give you kind of a couple of examples of things that we were interested in knowing. What non-academic questions will be asked of the students on the new assessment that you're going to be using with Common Core? And will parents be able to opt their children out of the new assessment? I was just wondering how you are going to be handling that in a future answer to these questions. That's our question. It is in the law that they, if parents can opt out, and we were wondering how East Penn was going to handle that. Also, will parents be able to see the non-academic questions prior to their children taking the assessment? And this is kind of the gist of the questions that we were interested in having answers to. And I'd be happy to get to hear from you shortly and pick up those questions. We would appreciate your answering them and writing to us. Thank you.
The next request I have to address the board is from a Janice Bowman of Allentown.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address the board. I'm talking about Common Core. The part I have just found out is that actually on the testing, I didn't realize that children didn't have to have the question correct, where if it's five plus five equals 10, it could be a nine or 11, and then you go retest, retest, retest. And if they fail according to the Act Title 22, which is in here, that you can actually pass them if they can prove how they got the answer. And I'm like, how does that help with them getting a job? The other thing is, if they keep failing, you can also waiver them by having them do special projects, or you can go down to Harrisburg, which is on page 56 in the law, that you can request them to be passed through anyway because they met certain criteria. So I'm fairly concerned that Common Core is so good, but yet you don't have to have the question right, and even if they keep failing and you think there's a mental or whatever type problem you want to make, you're going to wager them through. So I'm just confused. That's part of the questions we will be asking. And the testing, when you have that little box, the IT programs, they have to take the test questions in order. So 1 through 10, they're not allowed to skip, like we were taught to take a test, you answer the ones you know and go back to the ones you don't know. They take them in order. Since no child left behind came on tech, the software programs, I did the research, are set up that has to be in order so many minutes, and they cannot change their answer. So I'm like, you're going to put this on the child's record for the rest of their life, and they're not allowed to change their answer if they hit a wrong button. So I have a problem with that. So these are some of the issues that we're going to be asking you about. How do you look at it as a school board for the fairness of the child? Thank you.
Those are all the requests I have to address the board this evening. Inadvertently, the approval of minutes was left on of the Order of Business, so we will do that now. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Of July 8th. Seven. Any discussion on the minutes of July 8th? None appearing. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the report of the superintendent, Dr. Thomas Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I want to remind the board of two kickoff events for starting the next school year. The annual staff day will be held next Tuesday, August 20th, 8:30 a.m. La Mayes High School, as always, board members are certainly welcome to attend. We'll have the usual remarks by, I think Mr. Kirsho is giving their remarks this year. I'll be able to say some remarks as student honor for the association, and we will have a little talk, and people will then be able to go back to their buildings and do work, have meetings, and then teachers will be in next Wednesday, and we'll be starting school August 26th. Also, tomorrow morning, we have a welcome breakfast and initial meeting with all our new staff members. Our new teacher orientation kicks off tomorrow, so again, board members are certainly welcome to attend tomorrow morning, 8:30 here. Let me give you an update on Lowell Lane. Took a ride over last week. The work is almost all complete. Certainly, Mr. Glancy, Dr. Mary Miller, you can add anything to what I'm going to talk about. We're very happy. We saw the curb work is all done by the township, and it looks great. We're happy about that. I think we're in the process of now placing the signs, so I'm confident everything's going to be ready for the start of the school tomorrow afternoon. We're going to have a joint training session with Bowman County Township and new crossing yards. We have not had those folks. We're anxious to meet them. We're embracing them as part of our family. Also, our own staff members will be working onsite, better employees of the school district will be attending as well, so we're excited about welcoming and getting this work going on. I think we've been able to work with the Bowman County Fire Department. We've changed some of the signs around. I think that's okay. We're ready to go, and we should have that sign up very soon, maybe a week or two after the school year starts. But that's not going to hold back. I don't think that presents any significant issues. Enrollment. A couple of things I want to draw the board and public's attention to. As I promised last spring during the budget process, we are certainly watching Shoemaker and McCauley, especially fourth and fifth grades. Right now, we've had, we are fortunate, some students and their parents, they have chosen to leave McCauley, so especially in fourth and fifth grade. So the numbers are in the 30 range, but right now we're not recommending in the future for the reasons that I gave you last spring and the reasons I wrote, your parents have raised the issue publicly. When I wrote this report last Thursday, we were down to a total of 68 students from this time last year, or, I'm sorry, from June until we are now. However, today, we enrolled 14 students alone today. And in talking to our registrar, Mrs. Evans, who works out of fire, I'm pretty confident we're going to realize more than 68 students in the next three weeks. For some reason, parents always wait until the last moment, and we'll do the best we can. Today, I had an opportunity to meet with representatives from K Builders. We got some confusion settled. We originally thought there might be 180 homes going in in Hills of Lockridge, so it's going to be 83. We expect that development's going to be built out over the next two to three years, and I guess a conservative estimate will be about 1.5 students per household based on the cost. That development coupled with the impending development of game and road is going to have to be a situation that we as a board of education watch very closely. One of the things that we've talked about, my staff and I internally, and I mentioned to one or two board members, but I'm probably going to come back when our numbers settle down. I strongly recommend that maybe we ought to look at getting a demographic study done sometime this year. And by that, I mean, not the kind of great work that Dr. Thorma does, but hiring an outside group, I can tell you right now, strong recommendation would be, that's a thing you can accumulate if you haven't used them, I have, you do a good job. One of the things that I like about that group is that they come and they visit local townships, and they sit, representatives from each township, and look at improved subdivisions and developments, and make a calculation on what that may bear in number of students coming in and away. So that's something almost certainly is going to happen. If not, in the next six months, certainly within the next year. The other thing is, we get a monthly update from Pat White, Prudential Realtors. Right now, homes are on the market this time compared to last year, about 30 days less, and so we're seeing a real lot of that in the housing market. Again, we're going to come back to you with the class size report, but I think it's always kind of productive at this point, and so we've got at least third day enrollment to see what that looks like. And then we'll come back, as promised, and give you a class size report on what's going on at the elementary, what's going on at two middle schools, and then remember a couple years ago, Dr. Thorma did a great report for you on individualized class size in each academic area at the high school. And so I think we really need those numbers. I saw it on the spring board for doing anything with enrollment going forward, but I think this is the year that we're going to have to take a long hard look at, at getting prepared for inevitable. Right now, inventory, we have five classrooms that are available in Albertus, and one, possibly one at McCauley, possibly one at Shoemaker, so our reservoir of classrooms is not that great. Seven classrooms, bigger 25 students, so you can tell our capacity's going to be stretched in probably within a year or two. So we're going to have to look at that as a group this year. I did send you a, I think you did put the packet in. If I didn't, I apologize. A report of the campus I attended. I want to thank you very much. I had excellent two and a half days. I think I said it out, didn't I?
I didn't.
Okay, good. I do want to thank you for the opportunity. These things are excellent for two reasons. The speakers we had this year were really pertinent and topical. Then the other thing is sitting and having the opportunity in that one with superintendents throughout the country. And I want to tell you that being 65, I thought I was an old guy, but I had a chance to sit and enable with a great superintendent from Missouri. Never met the guy before. 73 years old. And he inspired me. And as I mentioned in my report, having a chance to talk to Benny Gooden, Benny's from Fort Smith, Arkansas, a good old boy, but Benny's like 71 years old, and I get inspiration because it's obvious to me that both these guys are doing great things in the district. And then also, I have to tell you that it was kind of a cotton pop experience. The speaker's Gene Bottums, but he isn't 70, he's very close to 70. And I have no idea how old Charlotte Danielson is, but I would have to believe that she's certainly my age or maybe a little bit more. So it was a really good time to get inspired by people of my age group who are really committed to public education, and education in general. I had an opportunity to sit and talk to Rick Cass. If you don't know anything about Rick, very controversial book, I'm reading it right now, it's called Cage-Busting Leadership. He had some very controversial things to say, a lot of proof and thought about how we manage time and manage our people in our organization, and certainly things I'm going to pursue with my leadership group this year. I think it was great to hear Charlotte Danielson, a writer of books like everyone else. But I will tell you this, with all due respect, that the three people who came up and talked, I think you're missing the point. You can focus all you want on the Common Core, but I'm telling you, that's not our big deal here. Our big deal is classroom instructional practices. And I'm telling you, if you listen to Dr. Danielson, I'm more convinced than ever that what we're doing with our deal and our fundamental instructional practices are what we should be putting our emphasis on. And the fact that here, in every district in Pennsylvania, very shortly, we're going to be rolling out the new teacher effective law. And to hear Dr. Danielson talk about what makes a distinguished teacher, what makes a proficient teacher, what makes someone with basic skills, and what makes someone who's not doing well, I think that's where we want to be as a school district, again, making that investment. And every one of our teachers is going to be our continued commitment. That's why we've had that focus on instructional rounds and instructional practices for the last two years. And I'm really excited that that's going to continue. Next board meeting, Dr. Thorma, Mrs. Campbell, and I are going to give you just an update on what the teacher effective law looks like, and we may have some information in two weeks on the school performance profile. Right now, we are validating, or at least asking our principals to validate building data, and so we expect that that performance score is going to be coming out sometime in September. And as you know, that's going to drive a lot of school improvement planning at individual building levels. The other speaker that I did have a chance to listen to, phenomenal guy, Gene Bottums. I met Gene Bottums about 15, 20 years ago when I was doing work with Phil Schleckie. And a lot of superintendent colleagues of mine, South people out of there. Unfortunately, some of them retired, Carlos Fix from Carlos's Gulfport, Mississippi School District, literally got wiped out a couple of years ago. And Rodney Nafon, who was superintendent here in Louisiana, Rodney's in a parish, again, that was almost wiped out by some hurricanes. But good guys that work with, and they're doing a lot of work. And Gene Bottums represents the Southern Regional Board. They're doing a lot of work with intensive, integrated STEM activities in high schools throughout the South and in low tech schools throughout the South. In fact, for those of you on the board at LCTI, Gene came over and said, hey, from the Lehigh Valley, right? And said, absolutely. He goes, you have, if not the best, one of the best skills, career in technical institutes in the country. And we know that, but it's always nice to hear that from an outsider. So Gene talked about the intensity, about the importance of getting kids in real, live situations where they can problem solve, like research on solar energy, research on environmental issues. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish, even at the elementary schools with our STEM projects. So again, thank you. I came back from Savannah feeling validated that we as administrative group are on the right track and doing the important things. And more importantly, thanks to have the opportunity to sit with superintendents from Ohio, sit with superintendents from Missouri, New York, New Jersey, all over the country. I had a chance to meet a fellow colleague from Pennsylvania, Superintendent Dyer from Dallas Town, Pennsylvania, to talk about some of the things that we're doing. Those are always very encouraging conversations, and so I really appreciate that. One of the things that we're going to be doing, you talked about improving communications this year, we're going to be updating our school district website. Mr. Mullin has shown us some facsimiles of what they may look like.
Little peek.
We haven't made a final decision, but like everything else, we're going to refresh, give it a new look. I think it was updated links. We had a lot of information. What we wanted to do is make sure that people are channeled in the right direction. So look for that coming up in the future. We're going to have a refreshed public face on the district, we're also going to be upgrading to Dr. Thorma's efforts, our dashboard. We've talked about doing enhancing some of our fiscal sections as well. As you know, I'm going to be also doing what I used to do in Brick, which is going back and blogging, and probably going to try at least for every other week, start with. I'm going to do a mix and match of some fiscal issues, some curricular issues perhaps, and some other items of topical interest. But one of the things that I used to do a lot for my board in Brick is try to give board members some cheat sheets. Now, today, they're going to get a huge cheat sheet, I'm going to update the Common Core. But one of the things that I know board members, when you go out in public, are always asked certain questions about pertinent topics. So here's something I put together for you a little bit, that you might want to consider when people are costing you in the giant, other places, getting your hair cut. There's some little fashion figures, down and dirty, as I call them, on fiscal matters. And also, this saves for the public. And I think having educated board members is really important. When I go out to community groups, this is what I talk about. ADM, that's your average daily membership. We rank 25th in the state, that means we're the 25th largest school district in the state. Our pupil expenditure, based on data that's perhaps two years older, we're going to be updated. We're ranking 265. 265. That's from 1,500. So we're below average, so to speak, less than half. So I think that's another indicator that we're doing things the right way. Fund balance rank, I noticed a lot of talk about fund balance. But folks, to be honest with you, we rank 323rd. That's based on total fund balances, percentage of expenditures. 323, that means that we're basically 67% of school districts in the state have larger fund balance than we do based on their expenditure. So again, I think that's another admirable trait about our school district. An A ratio, what does that mean? Simply means it's an indicator of wealth. We rank 422nd. That means that only 78 school districts in Pennsylvania are considered more wealthy than us. So again, when you put those four items together, I think they're pretty good economic indicators. And then I always like to give people the history of the index, and again, it's always a good thing to go back and look at, at least to my tenure superintendent, looking and see what we've accomplished over a period of time. And I'm not, they're descending order. We've moved from budget 4.4% increase, 3.24, 3.85, 1.3130, and zero. So I think those are pretty good, pretty good numbers, indicator that we've managed funds pretty well. Woody's bond rating, A2, standard fourth double A. And then staffing, which I think is always an indicator, people say, I have too many people working. But for the last couple of years, I've given you school reports, and we know that's not true either. So basically, we have less teachers than the state average, less administrators than the state average. So I think those are the kind of things that I'm going to be blogging about with parents. When I blog, it's about four or five paragraphs, all factual, very little opinion, one-way communication. But we are also going to start a Facebook page this year, and we're ready to go with that. Mrs. Boyes and I have looked at that, and I think that's going to be kind of a page where we're going to do celebrations, talk about more personalized contact with students and people in our organization, and also at that point, give parents or community members a chance for some two-way communication. We'll respond back to people when they comment about the district or Facebook. So we'll be unveiling that in an opportune, distant future. Also, the board tasked me with looking at recommendations for Bud, Board Public Comment, on how we want to structure our meeting. I plan to give you a little bit of an update in that board meeting, so you can look forward to that. I've looked at almost 200 policies in the state of Pennsylvania, and some from other states. So I'm definitely seeing some patterns, and I will be coming back with some honest data and giving you some recommendations that I'll give you a little bit in. I'm probably going to recommend that we look at altering our policies somewhat. So that's based on, on some data I'm seeing statewide. So I'm doing the homework, looking at that, enjoying myself immensely, reading what other school districts are doing throughout the state. Let me explain to the public tonight, we have administrative goals on the agenda. I'm really pleased to offer those publicly, for first time now, the board and the public to know what Mrs. Campbell, Dr. Thorma, and I are concentrating on. Also, we've now fulfilled the requirement of the new Assistant Superintendent. Well, as you know, you've hired Mrs. Campbell. As part of that work, we publicly have to approve those goals, and rather than single her out, I think it works important that the three of us are joining together. So you can expect, at least in my self-evaluation I prepared for you over here, I'll be commenting on those goals. Dr. Thorma and Mrs. Campbell will report. They'll be doing self-evaluations for me, based on their involvement with what's collected goals. So any questions on those? And I think some of the information we have for the public, I think some of the comments tonight, we will be preparing informational packets for the public regarding school performance profile, teacher effective law, and Common Core when things get straightened out in the state. And that brings me to Common Core. Now, a lot has gone on in the last week, and what I want to do is walk you through some of the documents that are not available, and give you an update on what's going on in Harrisburg. And I want to remind everyone with all due respect, this is more of an issue that's going on in Harrisburg than it is in any school district in the state of Pennsylvania. I think Mr. Bauer sent you all an update on what we got from Pennsylvania School Workers' Association. You have that in front of you. If you haven't seen that, I'll put a copy in your packet today. And I think that's a good segue into the next section, which is, as you know, the House of, in Pennsylvania, passed House Resolution 338, basically asking the Department of Education and the State Department of Education to consider some changes to the Common Core language. And so what I've given you is a synopsis that I received from Carolyn Dummerest. Carolyn Dummerest was the Assistant Deputy now for Education in the state of Pennsylvania. Carolyn presented to the Education Committee last Monday. Carolyn, as you all know, background, former superintendent in Central, in Dawkins County, also executive, former executive director of PSDA, a very knowledgeable and well-respected educator in the state of Pennsylvania. So she was So she was reporting back to the House Committee on what the changes are in response to House 38, 338. So I'm not going to read through all these, or you're going to insult your intelligence, but certainly the first block was concerned about, did the, you know, how did the Common Core standards come to Pennsylvania? There was a little blurb there that the State Board commissioned an alignment study by University of Pittsburgh. And I can tell you that, and most educators, and if I forgot to tell you this over here, you know, when they did the analysis, 85% of the Pennsylvania standards initially encompassed the Common Core standards. So there wasn't that much of a change for us in Pennsylvania. Also, there have been educators in some of this district that have been involved in developing Common Core standards in Pennsylvania. The second block talks about to whom the standards are going to apply to in Chapter Four, and that the academic standards will not apply to private schools, religious schools, or home education students. They will involve charter schools and cyber charter schools if they are public schools, which we're very happy about. They should be held to the same standards that we are. Also, purpose of any change is to establish rigorous academic standards and assessments applicable only to public schools of the Commonwealth. Also, the next idea, I guess there was some comment that the standards were not given in the public vetting. I'm not going to talk to that, I wasn't involved in that. But anyway, the language change, that Common Core standards were developed with input from Pennsylvania educators. And if you watch the PCN tape, Carolyn Dumeeresk held up a list, and I think that was published in October 2012, exactly what teachers in the Commonwealth were involved in developing Pennsylvania standards. So that's for that. On the next page, I think this is very important, and I'm going to speak this out because I think there's been a lot of myths running about in Pennsylvania. We're certainly going to, at least in the Chapter Four, the edited version, Chapter Four already expresses the board's intention that public schools maintain absolute flexibility in designing curriculum. Not my words, those are the words that are changed in the Chapter Four changes. And the specific language is, "The policy of the board, as the State Board, that local curriculum be designed by school entities to achieve the academic standards under Chapter Four." And the school entities are schools and school districts. So that's it. Additional provisions that provide local school districts flexibility in curriculum are found in certain sections for elementary education, middle school education, and high school education. And I'm going to give each board member a copy of the revised Chapter Four requirements. And I think this is most important. Under that, "The department shall not, and the board will not, require school entities to utilize a statewide curriculum or statewide reading list." Okay, the next section. "The board," this being the State Board, "will not include national assessments as part of the state assessment system unless upon consultation with teachers, counselors, and parents representing students who have been identified under Chapter 14. The board determines the assessment as an appropriate means of assessing the academic process of students." In other words, Chapter 14 is specialized studies. There could be some mandates regarding getting information of special ed, but not necessarily that the last been looked at. "The board will not, and the department shall not, be a governing state in any consortium for the development of a national assessment or the purpose of utilization as part of the state assessment system." So in other words, you read about park, that's not going to happen in Pennsylvania. "The department may continue to participate in a consortium to develop an alternative assessment to measure the progress of students identified under Chapter 14." So that's basically a little bit of a leeway there, again, based on special education. Now, the board is also going to provide multi-year implementation, period to give districts time to appropriately plan for the utilization of current resources. So again, when I give you one of my goals, and I'm talking about prior to 2014, that's exactly what I mean. We're no way yet ready to talk about how we're going to be implementing all this stuff in this particular point in time. No. But however, we have responded, like every other district, that we are now engaged in activities and trying to align our curriculum with the proposed standards. And basically, very little is going to be observable to parents this year. But I think the biggest change is that it's going to be for Algebra I students, it's certainly going to be more comprehensive, more rigorous. As I said before, about 85% of the standards are already in place in Pennsylvania, we're going to be doing some Algebra A concepts. But one of the things my staff and I are going to put together and put on our website, specifics, certainly not in that month or so, but somewhere down the line, as to what exactly is going to be different. And we're sort of in a holding pattern, waiting for these proposed changes to go through in front of talk about the timeline in a very short period of time. Now, also, one of the big myths going around the country, and even in the state, data mining. But on page three of J, "The department shall not expand the question of student data in accordance with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, shall not collect personal family data due to the implementation of Pennsylvania Core Standards as contained." So I don't know how this thing to get started, but that certainly, I can tell you from the training we've had, those words, data mining, they've never been imparted to us, and none of our teachers or independent workshops. So I can tell you, I'm sort of glad that the state put that out, so we don't have to be the ones saying to parents that that's not going to happen. So I'm glad the state is taking a bull by the horns. Also, on the last sheet are some slight changes that they have in third grade. You can certainly book those at your convenience. Also, I've got some statements I want to pass out. Again, I think it's very important for those of you who are usually involved in this issue, my advice is much like we tell you about budget matters, feel strongly about a particular topic, call your state legislature. Here are some press releases from Representative Clymer, Representative Almond, and Representative Grove, basically saying that they looked at both changes and are pretty much in favor of those changes. So good, bad, or indifferent, looks like the House Education Committee is ready to move on. Sure, I'm sorry. Now, in terms of what's next, what's next, the, my understanding, the Senate is going to be conducting a hearing with PD and State Board Representatives on August 29, 9:30 a.m. Senator Fulmer is running that committee meeting. Senator, I'm about reminding that if any citizen wants to... If any citizen wants to make a comment regarding any issues, or any questions regarding the Pennsylvania Core Standards, then certainly contact his office, Senator Fulmer. Now finally, I know it's bulky reading, but I want to pass out the most current edition of the proposed changes to Chapter Four. This is it. That's not to say the Senate may not make changes, but this is what was passed on to the House Education Committee. All the changes I have in the capsule are also highlighted in dark here. You might guess we all decide credit. I think it clarifies a lot of questions that are out there. So I just want to end with just a couple of remarks that, you know, a lot of us are frequently critics of the State Department of Education. And that's true, but I think they've done a pretty good job. Who prepared, if anybody wants to see that, but rather take a whole lot of time, I would remind all board members and members of the community to go on and visit the PD's SAS website. Everything you want to know about academic standards, assessments, it's all there for you. It's plain English, I don't think there's any secrets, nothing held back. But let me share with you some things that I've heard, and I certainly want to, at least from our perspective, dispel. I'm not taking the side of the State Department, but I can tell you, my staff and I have been at multiple meetings. Number one, a lot of myths running around that somehow teachers have been commanded that they can only teach using the lesson plans that are on the State website. That's absolutely false. No teachers have been given that direction in this district. I can tell you, my son works in Southern Leon, he hasn't been given that. My daughter-in-law works in Bethel, I think Mr. Rills will tell you a part one, they haven't been given that direction either. I don't have this stuff getting started, but that's false. Number two, rumor running around that somehow teachers, that they're going to be checked when they log into this stuff and held accountable. I've never heard that. That could be true, but no one has ever told me that, so we want to debunk that myth as well. You've heard about data collection. I can honestly say that in all the training sessions I've been involved, I've never heard that we're data mining, I've never heard collection of data, that's never been mentioned at all. But I can tell you, one thing we've been told routinely is that we will always have the ability to develop our own curriculum here. And I think you see that, and that's really not a change in Chapter Four. So all this stuff about that districts are going to have to do this data, this data curriculum, all that other stuff. Well, don't take it from me, read the new proposed regs. I think you'll find everything you need to know as a board member about the state of the Common Core. So if you've got any questions, do your homework. I really mean that sincerely. Do your homework, there's a lot of stuff. I would be surprised if you hadn't been confronted, the community, people out and about, people are going to talk about this stuff, it's a hot button topic. My advice is, know at least the changes that are being proposed. I think you'll be safe, you stick to that, period. Any questions on that? Nope, I have still a couple more things. Sorry, it's been a long hot summer.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
In the PD, the PSBA release, I was just trying to, as far as next step, that these changes are expected to be voted on at the board's next meeting. So these panels, the governor's policy, the governor's budget office, and the council for review, so is it once that it published, once they approve it, it looks like it gets published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin, it can become effective? So the Congress never votes on this again, is that correct?
I don't know.
Or it never has to sign?
Yes, yes. My understanding is that this is going to go to the Senate Committee, unless there's, then there will be reconciliation between the Senate and the House, and then I'll move on to any comments that the State Board of Education build up, and then will be published, and then the governor also has to be signed off. So I'm not looking for this to be done in September, possibly October, I don't remember. That's why I'm not waffling, I'm not, that's what I'm looking for, I'm not bailing out people, I'm just laying low until we get the final information. Here it is, you have what I have, and that's it. And then we're going to, my staff and I are going to put together some information on subtle changes that we're doing, but I will be the first to tell you, there's not scientific changes in this district. The other thing, I did forget, there's this belief logically around that we're coming now, that will never fly any span. I mean, I don't have to tell you that, you already know, parents here will put up with us, lessening our curriculum, our gentleness for high school students, that's never going to happen, that's my sense of it. So those people that are promoting that, maybe somewhere else, that's not going to happen here. So I mean, I tell people, just take a step back and do some comments on this stuff. And so we'll move on. Now, the last thing, I think Mr. Stoltz has a question.
I just wanted to thank you for the comprehensive report on this. A lot of information you want to go over. And I believe that you're sincere when you're asking this information on to us, Representative Almond, and Seth Grove say that this is okay. Their word generally holds good with me, but I'm still reminded of President Obama saying, you know, Obamacare, if you like your doctor, you can keep it. Now that turns out that may not be the case. So we'll see when implementation comes, how it works out, but I appreciate you providing us the information to do our own homework, go back and see it. Senator Fulmer is a good man, I worked with him a lot, he has a right to work, and I trust his judgment on issues like this.
My personal opinion, I think PD's going to get more flak from the Democratic senators than they are the Republicans.
Yeah, politics doesn't exchange.
I'll share with you one on the personal, in Savannah, I think I mentioned in my report, I always like to go get the, like Mr. Ballard and like you, I like my policy, I like my policies. And so Sarah Podelski, who's, Sarah Podelski, who's one of our, I think these are lobbyists, but that's what she is, they call her government relations person, but she's always a lobbyist, we all know that. She spends all her day walking the halls of Congress. I asked, when she was finishing the report, very politely, I raised my hand, and I said, "Sarah, what's going on with Common Core?" And she laughed, and she goes, "Come on, you better know better than that." But I hadn't asked a question. And of course, the answer's, this is not a national thing. People in Washington are running away from this, nobody wants to get involved, no senators in a right line, no congressmen in a right line, this is a states kind of thing. So I can just tell you, there's no, nothing going on in the Congress regarding Common Core, at least she was able to give me on last week in June. So that's it. If anyone wants to see a copy of the report to me, give me an email, I'd gladly send your report. Very interesting, very interesting. And almost like in the last five years, things have switched around with political parties. I really mean that. There was a time, maybe in not-too-distant future, I mentioned I was on the resolution committee, it was almost a complete 100% Democratic agenda in Washington. That's not the case anymore with our superintendent's group. So that's one of the things that's really changed a lot in my life is, I know a couple of you asked me to talk about Navvions. I gave you a little bit of a write-up, we have Dr. Plessy here tonight, Mr. Pepperata, when we get that on the agenda. I am excited. I can tell you this, it's great to get out and about, both Mr. Pepperata and I, an opportunity to visit our St. Clair High School, which is supposedly the number one ranked high school in Pennsylvania, doing wonderful things. I think parents and students are going to enjoy Navvions, I think it's going to do a lot. Number one, processing transcripts, I think it's going to be a great planning tool for parents to work closely with your students. College choices are going to be more up-to-date information. The fact that we're going to be able to create online surveys with students, all grade levels, current graduates, I think we're going to be, we want to pay specialists to come in and do all that, we can create some of our own documents, our own surveys. And I just think it's going to be, for the price involved, $13,600, it's going to be a great, a great tool, and I think, again, I'm looking forward to getting comments back from our, from our parents and our students as the year goes forward. I really strongly recommend it. And then I want to end up, unfortunately, I've got to say something serious today. And I'm going to apologize ahead of that, I don't like to talk like this, but I've got to do it. So bear with me. We just started our sports season today. And it's a great thing coming back, it's a superintendent seeing our kids out involved in athletics, involved in all sorts of fall activities. But I want to remind the board and the public, there are a lot of things going on behind the scenes. Bear with me for about five minutes, please. This district, we have two safety committees. Mr. Lancy serves on both, Dr. Miravela serves on both. As an opportunity, we encourage and encourage... As an opportunity, we encourage employees to come forward and report any safety concerns that we have. Mr. Ritter also sits in those. That's how we find out about things about workplace safety, whatnot, and we take action. I want to remind the board and the public that every facility is checked thoroughly by our maintenance and our coaching staff before we put kids in athletic competition and into practice. Also, inspections happen routinely during the seasons. We inspect tennis courts, fields, mats, weights, exercise equipment, bleachers, backwards, rims, backstop, tennis net, tennis nets, starting blocks, hurdles, field event items, pool, pool deck lining, heating units. I'm proud to be part of the district that's been a leader in dealing with head injuries. I give all the credit in the world to Mr. Romella. He's been a pioneer in doing this. Impact testing, not many people heard of that, now it's required. We want to first districts to do that voluntarily, and I can tell you, I'm proud of our record in not putting kids in contact unless they've gone through this testing. Here's another thing I'm proud of, we put in wireless connections in our football stadium because God forbid if some fan, parent, or an athlete has a situation, we now, medical service technicians can now get on the internet, look for symptoms, contact the high school, and ask another positive. No one pushed to do that. I think we might have been the first high school in Leon Valley to do that. One of the reasons we recommended the new track four or five years ago was because of safety. We reported that one of the last track meets that we had, we had a student athlete from Liberty High School, had a serious injury on the cinders. I don't think we've had any major injuries at all since we've had the all-weather track. Here's something you don't know, but I'm going to share with you. Every year, we purchase new baseball and softball helmets. You know why? Because you can't recondition those helmets, and we don't want to put our kids in harm's way. Every year, we send all our football helmets for reconditioning. The ones that aren't safe, we throw out. We do the same thing with shoulder pads. And on top of that, we send out lacrosse helmets for reconditioning, for inspection, even though we're not required to do that. We engage three athletic trainers. Most high schools have one or two, we have three. Under Mr. Miravela's leadership, we have a section, each coach is manned for safety, how to handle safety, and how to handle emergencies, customized for each sport. All here, and I'm glad we provide the board copies on our coaching manual. We also have a sports medicine department policy man for all of our coaches, and our nurses, and our personnel, basically dealing with every kind of medical condition that a student athlete may have. Not wanting to get into specifics. We've hosted District 11 diving championships here in the Ace High School since 2004. We have a dedicated maintenance person on hand to look at that pool every day. In 2011, 2012, our maintenance staff spent countless hours in that pool working on ventilation and air temperature issues, and overall humidity issues in the pool area. We communicated just about every day with the coach and Mr. Stein, who was the teacher in charge. In fact, Mr. Grancy, Mr. Ritter, and me personally made multiple visits to that pool often to see how everything was going on. Last year, June 2015, 2012, the board approved 153,000 jobs to work on HVAC operations and systems in that pool. Now, everything's computerized, and we can see immediately if there's something wrong. I can tell you honestly, Tim O'Connor is an excellent swim coach. Mr. Stein just retired. He supervised that pool every day with love, affection, and dedication, and he sat on Mr. Grancy's safety committee. Mr. Romella, I think Mr. Fuller, you accomplished, you accomplished, accomplished, when the state honored Mr. Romella as Athletic Director of the Year. No small feat. I am honored as a superintendent to serve with such dedicated staff members, maintenance, teachers, coaches, athletic director, not only Mr. Romella, but Mr. Murray as well. And I want to state for the record tonight publicly, that in no way, shape, or form were those diving boards ever dangerous, and they never posed a safety threat to students or athletes. The two diving boards in question were sent to Doorflex Company in Nevada. All were inspected, both were inspected. If they were dangerous, they would have been junked. They were not dangerous. They had been reconditioned, they're on their way back, the price tag would be $1,900, I think we budgeted about $2,000 per. We also replaced the bolts that hold them in place. All this was budgeted for by the athletic department and planned for it to take input from the staff. I want to say for the record, and I'm sorry I have to say this, this is Donchus, I think your comments about putting students and athletes at risk were offensive and totally out of line. I want the board and the public to know that you did not not contact Mr. Romella, nor did you contact me before you're making your comments at July 8th board meeting about who was putting students at risk. I don't think there's any excuse for making that kind of statement, especially since you were advised by even one of your own colleagues at the June 24th meeting to call me for information. Mr. Ballard, I'm pleased.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on Dr. Seidenberger's report? Mr. Pollicano?
Yeah, I understand, Dr. Seidenberger's inputs on the common core, and in light of that, and in light of the public presentation provided due to the meeting on common core this week, it might be worthwhile, and I would like to make a motion that you were a representative and you choose to attend and join in on the panel subject with Dr. Lucick and Ryan McCants, they represent. That's much out of the way.
Is there a second for that motion? Second. All right? We will now discuss this motion. Mr. Pollicano, would you like to explain it further?
Well, I, we, what superintendent presented tonight, as an attempt to clarify things that people are misincorped about, and maybe this way, with this discussion on this panel, we'd get more information from different sources, and I know Ryan's heavily involved, I'm not telling Ryan how I started this, and I think Dr. Lucick is a background, a background in education and theory knowledge, and it might be more educational for everybody, and might help with this misunderstanding of some of the things. That's why I think it would be worthwhile, it'd be educational for everybody, including the public, and everybody here, all board members, anybody. I'm sure, the more to come, I'm sure you welcome.
Anything else? Anyone else want to comment? I want to interject. Okay, Mr. Boffler?
What is the proposal we're discussing?
I believe it's a direction to send Dr. Seidenberger or an assistant to this, go to the September, yes.
We take part in the panel discussion, but thank you, Mr. Boffler.
Mr. Stoltz?
I'm just going to ask Mr. Pollicano to clarify one point, if this is mandating that somebody representative be sending, or basically saying that it is the sense of the board that we strongly suggest that a representative be sent to the practical board?
No, I understand, but Dr. Seidenberger's very different. It's all possible, I'm sure, it would be worthwhile, it would help educate people.
Could I then clarify the motion, perhaps in mandating necessary, to say that it is the sense of these national board directors that they suggest the administration send a representative to the August 20th Concerned Expenditures Meeting to participate in the common core panel if a representative was available for that meeting?
Is there a second to that amendment?
The key says it's okay, because the time they have is pretty good.
Mr. Pollicano? And since you were the second, okay, so that's what the amended motion is. Ms. Fuller?
May I point out that August 20th is the first day of the school, so that's going to be a very full day for everyone to begin with, I believe. Is that correct?
I would like to make a comment. I think it's very bad form or policy, as the case may be, for the board to get involved with directing our staff to take part in what is essentially a political event, and that it is not a wise thing to do for the board, and that's just my opinion on the subject.
Is there someone else who hasn't spoken yet? Let's see, here's a question. So, is anybody else? Dr. Boffler?
I would point out that we're going to be discussing or approving objectives, and while there are, I think it's, as a policy goal, we could set open communication, but I have troubles proposing exactly what is the specific communication we want to see in terms of you must attend this meeting or not attend this meeting, so I don't think that's a very, that's a very good policy direction.
Mr. Stoltz?
I may clarify that Resilis Nizaki must attend this meeting, as we suggest to attend this meeting in practical or separate ways.
Tom, what's your schedule like that day?
I'm busy.
I understand. Superintendent, would you like to talk about?
Yeah, look, I was invited, and I declined. I know a lot of reasons why, it's all intentional, I don't want to share with you folks, but you saw my goals and objectives, and by the way, I gave you a copy of those a month later before I got the invitation. I don't mind having parent meetings and informational, I want to do it in my terms. I don't want to do it in someone else's terms. And I think that's the trade-off. Bear in mind, goals, we made a commitment to you and all parents down in ours, but I think if we want to do it, I'd rather do it our way than not be hoping to someone else's rules or regulations. It's as simple as that. I think it's a matter of professional courtesy. I couldn't imagine asking one of my staff members to do that, not at this particular time, when this issue was so fluid. There's all this stuff, trying to make AI out of this, he said, she said, I just want to control that agenda and make sure that our house is in order before we do any of this. And right now, I don't think the timing is good for this. That's my personal opinion. I would gladly have a meeting, or have teachers present, we'll talk about all the changes, my curriculum people who are there, but I think it's best that we control the agenda. In my lifetime, I've been invited, accepted a lot, sometimes I decline, this is one professionally excellent, I would decline.
Other comments? None appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Nay.
Mr. Rose?
No.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Dr. Boffler?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hi?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Six nays, three ayes.
All right. We will move on to item two, personnel. It sounds unhappy attraction to including all the items in two personnel, including the addenda. Can I have a motion in that effect, please? Let's open it. Are there any comments on the personnel items, here two, 3.2? Not seeing any, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Dr. Boffler?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hi?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have 3.3, performance objectives of the central office team, can I have a motion, please? Dr. Seidenberger, did you want to say anything about this item?
Well, I think, first off, this district, the superintendents and assistants superintendent are laying out our goals, we're going to certainly publicize these as part of the assistance superintendent law, we have to put these up for public information, but as I said before, our intent is, I want you, as the board number one, and the public to understand what are driving our priorities for us, and we feel very comfortable, and I think, I think the things that we put down on paper are the things that I'm hearing, but I think are very important to you. I think, one, on math, you talked about me, and I'd say in my evaluation, you asked me to look at mathematics. We're very pleased to do that. We started to have those conversations internally, the conversation with Mr. Pepperata about that, we talked about Mr. Kakaval, about what we might do, Mrs. Nullak, and even Mrs. James Yelba, what we might want to do about looking at mathematics. And I think it's a very timely topic myself. One of the things that we talked about was improving communications throughout the district. We're certainly going to be doing that, based on blogging, so I think all of those are important topics, and I think in response to what you've asked me to do as the superintendent, so there it is, and I plan to self, I plan to hold myself accountable, my staff accountable. And, by the way, these roles are not only mine, they'll be transferred to everybody else in the organization. Every leader will be expected to do the same, so I'll reunify them, and so I'm really pleased that we're offering you these objectives, though.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? None appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Boffler?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye, standing.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hi?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
And ayes for the abstention.
We have item 3.4, approval of the Navvions contract, can I have a motion, please? So, move. Second. Discussion? Mr. Rose?
How are the students going to be introduced to this? How is it going to become integral in their high school experience?
Dr. Flisser, I don't think, have you been here before?
I've been here before.
It wasn't behind a curtain for the guidance department?
That would be it.
So, allow me to introduce Dr. Diane Flisser, who is a longtime counselor here at the high school, and also the chair of our counseling department, so I'm going to defer to her, because she's the expert.
Well, you know to be safe by experts, but I don't want to be big. I think that we've been planning on rolling this out and starting with seniors, and we plan on having a parent evening, guidance information night, that we will use just for, in Navvions, for our seniors, and then our juniors. It's a very robust system, so there's much to be utilized, and much for all of us to learn about it, so we're going to take it in smaller chunks so that we can, we can do a good job. But we will start with seniors, we will start with parents, and then include juniors, ninth grade, 10th grade. So, it'll be systematic. The counselors have been working hard and trying to learn the system, and also discussing this with other school personnel, because we will involve teachers and parents, there's a community aspect, as Dr. Seidenberger's already said, there's surveys and things, and what we're trying to do is to start immediately with the students, so that we can use it this year for our senior class and their college admission. class and their college admission process.
Well, you just talk a little about the speed of transcripts. I think that's very important for parents.
We feel that it's going to be much more effective and efficient to use this system because there are, students can log in, they can see which colleges they are applying to, they can let us know through that system. And so instead of being bound down to a lot of paper and hoping this one comes in and is processing that one, it will be immediate. They can see right away what has been processed, what's pending, they can get immediate feedback that their transcripts have been released. So we think it's really going to be not only cost-effective but very efficient. We found this year, this past school year, that there were times that with our paper transcripts, we actually, I think, at times held students up where there might have been inaccurate information released because school, many of the colleges now using the electronic transcripts have had to, I'm going to forget the word, scan, there we go, sorry. They had to scan the transcript, and so the student profile to this college looked like it was incomplete. I know I called once or twice, the students came in and they said, oh, such and such a college didn't get my transcript, and yet we send receipt, we turn receipt cards with each transcript so that we can get something back from the schools noting that indeed the transcript was received. And so when I called to check on it, that is what I was told by the admissions office. So we're hoping that's not going to be the case, and I know as we talk with Mr. Monk, everything that's electronic, you can see right away that it has been indeed received. So the students will get receipts. Teachers will be allowed to do recommendations this way, too, and so students can see that it's pending or that the teacher has done this, and we think that the parent, community portal, those parents will be able to keep track of what their students are doing as well.
Yeah, just had that, obviously, just building our size, the percentage of students who are going on two and three-year colleges, many of those students applying to multiple colleges, some double-digit colleges. To this point, it's been a very labor-intensive process, and so Naviance provides not just more accurate and instantaneous results, but it frees up some of our personnel to attend other matters.
Thank you. I'm very excited about the possibilities of this shows, and be interested to have an update, maybe in the year or the year ahead.
Awesome. We will be able to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Earnshaw?
So just a question from the mechanics. Does it tie directly to our student information system? Or do we run some kind of an electronic?
The next expert.
Basically, we have a nightly upload with basic demographic information to the Naviance servers in Langley, Virginia. When a counselor sits at their computer and pulls up a transcript from our student information system, it is then sent to Naviance matched with a student ID number, and that's put and is sent in their queue in the Naviance system. So it is there. Also, one of the benefits, I'll leave this fact that the student can go in and match their grades and how they're doing on grade levels, and look at all the districts, excuse me, all the colleges, the Commonwealth and beyond, and see how they are with their grades and what other schools are accepting scoops at their level. I'm picturing having my son be able to put into the system. First of all. So we'll do a nightly upload. It's held on their servers, and the exporter request gets matched up and sent immediately to universities and accepted.
And does Naviance then, if a university does not allow or permit or have the capability to receive electronic, does Naviance print and send it, or do we still print and send it?
What will happen is when a student can go down the list of colleges, they show a postage stamp in the event that a paper transcript is needed, then we would process it in the former way, or it will tell you whether it's a common application or whether it's electronic transcripts. But we're finding, I think, that most colleges now are taking the electronic transcripts.
So this should actually cut down on the amount of postage?
Absolutely.
The district is paying for it?
Absolutely.
We're sending a return receipt request?
We took a look at last year, in case this question would come up this evening, and just based on last year's transcripts alone, we think that the savings will be about $3,200, and that's just the postage for transcripts and not all encompassing. And that's the, we haven't included paper or the envelopes or the printing, no, these tend to be a not dimensioned label. So it should be, I think, cost-effective.
Okay.
Other questions? Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please? Dr. Lachter?
Just to the mechanics, so will this, will this be accessed through either home access center or Moodle or?
No, this is direct access from the parents into the Naviance.
So the web, Naviance website?
Correct. Correct. They do not come inside of our student information system.
Okay. And then, when you say the timeline, the order, what sort of, over what time are you going to take to roll it out to all the students? Is this going to be seniors this year and then others declaring next year?
We're planning on adding each grade level this year, and what we are hoping to do is to start with seniors and with them perhaps in the multi-media room, maybe a few, maybe 60 students in its own, making sure they're familiar with this program, how to go in. We are setting up welcome letters to the parents for each of the grade levels so that as they come out, the parents can also look at what we hope to accomplish with these. So it is very uncomplicated, and it will be used right away.
Ms. Donchus?
I have a number of questions, although we've already answered. Over our team, what would you say the problem is that the software is solving?
I think it's going to be more cost-effective and much more efficient. Students will be able to have immediate feedback where that application process applies for each one of them. So there's nothing to do with that timeline. When a student would send a transcript, we would write out a little slip of paper, send it back to their home, and say, yes, this was sent. This way they'll see right away, and they'll be able to see what recommendations are pending or if the teacher's already sent it out. So it's constant feedback for them.
And both the parents and students have access to it?
It is immediately, students and parents, yes, may also see what their students do.
And are the students going to be required to use it?
Well, I think the answer to that is yes, because what we want to do is make sure that nothing is missed, and that's the way I think we're going to be able to do that.
Will they have to provide any financial information into the system?
Not that I'm aware of.
And are all the different institutions participating or included in the software?
Oh, I think right now they said that there were over 2,200 colleges that are in Naviance system.
And that would be nationwide?
Yes.
Do we know how many colleges that are nationwide?
I don't know off the top of my head, but there were also, like in Canada, there were six countries as well that are included in that.
What account code is being used for this program and what's in the budget?
The exact account code?
I was hoping for that, yeah.
See, the administrative services code, I mean, this is sort of, probably staring at me, I'm wondering if I, I'd have to look it up and get the exact code.
I think it's.
But it was.
Not a commonly used administrative software function code, not like the normal systems that's in the system.
But it was.
Administrative software.
And are there any other financial costs over the $13,600?
No.
It's about $4.
The other bills tonight, there was another one, the Naviance $1,600. Is that?
I think that's for staff development. That's part of it.
I thought that was in that, I thought that was included in that figure.
It is, in the total figure.
Yes.
But we're paying for our bill, for services, right?
Oh, I need to call.
Yeah. Paying for hair growth training.
Yes.
Has the, is the IT department, Mr. Monk, have you evaluated the system for their property level security?
Yes, we reviewed it probably six or seven times in the past year and a half that we've been discussing, looking at the systems. My team is satisfied with it, except for Dr. Miravella. We've looked at it several times, have sent a non-disclosure agreement to contract language to Mr. Fisher for review. He is satisfied with it, so, yes.
Okay, so we only got the invoice, am I correct? We didn't get the contract to review.
That's what the contract is.
Is it at 16?
Is it at 16?
There are, there is not an actual contract, there's not, there are terms of services and non-disclosure agreement that come with it, the product, but it's an invoice piece of software.
Is there any advertising on this side at all? I am. And what other competitive products? I know that this was seen at, I was saying clear, but were there other competitive products evaluated in the same book and this one that you cited on?
I don't know that there's any.
Dr. Miravella?
The.
There were, there is one system that was similar, but it only offered transcripts. Besides the transcripts, there's probably about seven additional things this program does beyond transcripts, which are not offered at this point by any other vendor of this type of software product.
Okay, thank you.
Are you finished, Ms. Donchus?
I have quite a slew of questions here.
Was there some reason you didn't submit these ahead of time, so you didn't prepare for them? Since you have them in a list?
Well, yeah. Would you have expected me to submit them and then you would have replied to me?
Just submit them so that everybody could, they could prepare.
That's okay. I appreciate it. They're all doing, they're all doing fine. I took out everything that I had. I just feel a little uncomfortable that the motion is that we approve the contract for the services, and there really isn't a contract.
The sales invoice is.
Is it?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Is that it? Ms. Fuller, go ahead.
I know that this is rather an impossible question, but it sounds to me like a great deal of staff downtime to be saved. And it sounds to me like the $13,600 might be a partial payment for an administrative assistant to be taking care of these projects. So if you could just briefly describe how the current system works, how much time is involved with these requests?
Well, Mrs. TC is one of the administrative assistants in our office. She does the bulk of the transcripts right now, and Georgia Flyler also helps her. We're hoping that this, and they do, you know, they spend a lot of their own time, and they stay late, and they enter, you know, do a lot of things that probably goes unnoticed. We're hoping, and I'm paying, yes. And we're really hoping that this is going to make things better for everybody, that it'll be less stressful environment, and that the students, as well as the people working in the office, are going to be able to respond much more rapidly. We're hoping what will happen each morning is that Mrs. TC will be able to go onto this website, see which students are applying to colleges where transcripts can be sent immediately. Then the counselors are also notified of students that might be using the Common App, which might be a little more involved, and what other things have to be addressed there, regulations, and that we can fill out the school reports. So we're thinking it's going to be much more time-efficient for everyone. We're hoping that on the counselor's side of things, we will be able then to also spend more time with the students discussing things and their, you know, career interests and the academic pieces that go into college choices. We're hoping that with this, that the past high school students are much more, that will be better prepared to select careers or workplace environments. So it's a great program, and I hope that, you know, you'll all be able to see what we're talking about.
I thank you all for researching it and bringing it to us.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? All right, Ms. Donchus?
So that I'm correct, that there would be no additional staff hired to help with the program?
Correct.
And you hope it would actually save the couple people go on and be able to do other things? That's the hope. It is a non-educational spending, and I tend to delve into these, you know, it is for every dollar that's spent on non-educational needs, I'm taking the program away from something else, so I hope that you'll bear with me with all of my questions, and I thank you for the review.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Having just gone through this with my oldest daughter, who's preparing to head to college, and I thank you and your staff for making that possible, I fail to see how providing transcripts to higher education institutions is a non-educational expense. I mean, in order to apply to college, our students must provide a transcript, and it must be provided by the school. Otherwise, a student could falsify a transcript. It has to come right from the school to the university. How is that not an educational expense unless it is our express goal to prevent all of our graduates from pursuing higher education? That, I'm flattered that you wouldn't state that.
It's not unnecessary.
Wait a minute, let's go in order. Ms. Stoltz? Before this progresses any further, I'm going to call the question. Is there a second for that? Seven. All right, it's a non-debatable motion, a two-thirds vote of aye will cease debate on this question. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Dr. Lachter?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Aye.
We will now vote on this motion. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Lachter?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hye?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Next item on the agenda is legislative. The legislature is in recess, so therefore they can't do anything to us at the moment, but they are holding hearings on such things as the special allocation formula. That committee is active, we'll have to keep track of that, and there's a couple other committee meetings that are going on, but right now they're putting legislation in motion. The only item therefore under legislative this time is the approval of voting delegates for the new delegate assembly of PSBA, which will be held October 15th, and we need to send three delegates, and we've had three volunteers. Is there any, can I have a motion on this, please? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? None appearing. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Dr. Lachter?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Standing.
Ms. Hye?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
And ayes for the abstention.
All right, next item on the agenda is policy. We have two policies, one for the second reading and one for the first reading. Dr. Seidberg, do you want to say anything about these policies?
I think, Dr. Formo, I would ask, this is her domain, you want to speak to these policies? You need to usher these things through.
The academic acceptance, academic sequence policy is forwarded to you for first reading, I'm sorry, second reading today. With the changes that were made, there were some suggestions that were sent in that were quite minor in nature, but we also did do a revision for the section that basically addressed Dr. Lachter's question about the opportunity for students to take college courses and receive credit for those courses. So one of the sections that has a strike at, I believe is on the second page, under exempt course by examination, where what was number three is now being struck, simply because in review after the last board meeting, that particular section is not clearly an exemption to the policy because we already have a process in place for students because we already have a process in place for students to submit a form in the counseling office to be able to take a college course and receive credit for that college course. And also, students who choose to take a college course and perhaps not get credit for a course that's offered at the high school, those two opportunities are currently available. So the inclusion of that in the exemption policy is really, it doesn't belong there, so we struck it. And I believe, Dr. Barker, that addresses the question that you brought up the last time. Whether or not the course is online, perhaps through Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth or whatever venue that course is offered, to us is irrelevant simply because the student would have to meet the criteria based on the submission of the syllabus and the approval by the counseling office, the principal, and the department chairperson for that student to receive credit for the course. So I think the umbrella policy covers, I believe, the questions that you raised during the July meeting.
And that's one of the policies. The other one's just simply a distance change.
Yes, distance change for walkers. That's it. And we talked about that previously.
All right.
So it's busing.
Are there any other questions or comments about these policies? The one, sixteen point one, will be on the agenda the next time for final approval. Barring any comments that need to be put in at this time. And if you have any comments on Board Policy Two-O-Six, you should get them to the administration as soon as possible before it appears up for second reading. Anybody need to comment at this time?
Just the procedural, second reading is approval.
The third reading is. The third time it appears. There are two readings and one formal approval. Okay, so a formal approval will show up on the next agenda. Okay, we will go on to business operations. Can I have a motion on six point one, approval of bill list, please?
Second.
All right, are there any comments on the bill list? None appearing. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Pollack.
Aye.
Ms. Stolz.
Next item.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Some ayes to abstention.
All right. Is there any objection to combining remaining items in this section together?
Yes. I would ask that. I'm not necessarily opposed to something.
All right, we'll go six point two, interim real estate tax bills. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
All right, discussion on item six point two.
I'll wait. What's the rap?
Ms. Ernol. They've been business managers while working on this particular problem. It has to do with the county as well. Just a short description.
Lehigh County Assessment Office staff met with some business managers of the schools recently because in the past, prior to the reassessment, the county would send us a list of interims to send out, but we never saw the ones that were less than five thousand dollars of an increase change in the assessments before. So we don't know how many of those there were since we never were notified of them in the first place. And the county met with us to suggest that now that they're doing things differently, they're not sending information to us, we have to go to an FTP site and download the information each month, that the business managers should set some kind of threshold for what they felt bills should be sent out at. And the consensus of the business managers at the meeting was that rather than use a minimum change in assessment of five thousand, which the county is upping to ten thousand because of the reassessment, that we thought, well, what we're really trying to do is limit the amount of dollars the bills are for instead of the assessment change. Because the assessment changes occur at different times. So an assessment might go out for two months or it might be for the full year. So it makes a big difference in what the actual bill that you collect will be because it's for the time of the change, as well as the dollar amount of change. And we felt generally that fifty dollars seemed like a reasonable figure. If you actually, some of the tax collectors, when I talked to them about it, thought we actually should set a higher threshold because, you know, when the county used a five-thousand-dollar change before with forty-six-point-seven-five mils as our mileage, the bill, if it was for the whole year change, would have been two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And we weren't sending out those bills because we weren't even aware of the assessment changes. And there's quite a bit of work in sending out the interim bills, as well as we have to pay the collectors, we have to pay the postage, so that's the recommendation we came up with.
The change will slide.
Yes.
Anything else? Any other questions? Not seeing any. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Ms. Stolz.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Ms. Pollack.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Urshon.
Aye.
Ms. Ballard.
Aye.
All right, we'll have six point three then, record of investments.
So move. Second.
Okay. Questions on this one? Not seeing any. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Urshon.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Pollack.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Ms. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Ms. Ballard.
Aye.
All right, six point four, Food Services Management Contract. Can I have a motion, please?
So move. Second.
All right, questions? Ms. Ernol.
I'd just like to once again express my appreciation to the nutrition group for the outstanding job they do of managing our food services department. Not only do they do a great job of providing high-quality food, they work very hard to make sure we're in compliance with the ever-changing federal and state nutrition standards. They also do their best to introduce new foods to our students. I've seen in the newsletters introducing exotic fruits sometimes to the students, some unusual vegetables, even homegrown produce from the garden at the Lincoln Elementary School. So they've done a really great job creatively with bringing varied menus to our students while still providing a number of staples that students tend to expect. I also appreciate that they get involved in nutrition education with our students. From dressing up in the fruit and vegetable costumes to giving demonstrations and helping the students learn what good eating habits entail. I think that's been, they've been a great partner in educating our students in all things nutrition related. And I very much appreciate their efforts and value the contributions they make. I'm very pleased to support this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Urshon. Other comments, questions? None appearing. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Urshon.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Pollack.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Ms. Stolz. Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Ms. Ballard.
Aye.
And ayes to abstention.
All right, we have six point five, dispersal of funds. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Any questions or comments on this item? None appearing. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Urshon.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Pollack.
Aye.
Ms. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Ms. Ballard.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any new items to come aboard the board this evening, Ms. Hye?
I would just like to see if it'd be possible for you to look at our dress code just because there's a lot of changes, I think, with what students are wearing, pajamas, style pants. I don't know if you guys are into anything, so maybe that should be added in there. I was also thinking that hoodies should be added under for anything on their heads because I feel like students with hoodies have days. Even the stretch pants, new trend. So I was just wondering if the administration would mind looking at it.
So move.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Ernol. Thank you, Ms. Ballard. At our last meeting during the board sharing section, I had a number of criticisms from Ms. Donches. One of those was that she had not reviewed the budget book concerning section one thousand five hundred. That was the section that covered charter school students and mainstreaming education students. When I got home, I checked my budget book and indeed, that information was not present in the book. So I was unjust in that particular criticism of Ms. Donches and I apologize to her for that. That was unfair and I should have had my facts in order.
Thank you, Ms. Ernol. Ms. Donches.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Urshon. I appreciate that. I just had a couple things. One thing on my list that I was waiting for, I'm sure it's on the administration's mind, is the report on the story practices. A couple people had gone when they were volunteering to the conference, we had talked about them doing a report. And I had a question on the discipline code. It was a new addition, the class cut. I just don't know what that means. Class cut with supervision by a non-scheduled staff member?
Class cuts, class cut.
Right, and then what's with supervision by a non-scheduled?
Yes, there are two distinctions for class cut in the discipline code. One is a bona fide class cut whereby a student will, on their own, miss a class and not have a reason for being, a legitimate reason for being absent from class. That's a class cut and there's a consequence for that as well. Class cut with supervision would be a student who misses a class but is in attendance with another teacher. For instance, a teacher may go to the art room and work on a project and the teacher who's in charge of that class may think that that student's in a study hall because the student doesn't say anything about it, stays and remains to work on the project and later finds out a class cut slip was submitted by the teacher where that student should have been. That's an example. Or a student may decide, I'm going to stay in the library and work on this paper I have to next period, cut a class, and then gets verification from the librarian that he or she was in attendance. It doesn't happen often, but it happens. So what's on the agenda for this evening is a clarification of the consequences for class cut and class cut with supervision because when the administration reviewed the consequences, realized that the consequences at a higher level were more severe for a class cut with supervision than they should have been. Therefore, that change was submitted for revision this evening for your approval. Okay, it'll be for your approval during the August twenty-sixth agenda. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Before this meeting, we had an executive session to discuss real estate, non-traditional matters, negotiations, and a personnel issue. Our next board meeting will be on the twenty-sixth, here in the boardroom at seven-thirty P.M. We will still be on summer retire. And can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.